All right, it is 6:00 PM. Mr. Coott, all stand and face the flag. We start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did everyone get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, in 6B it should be motion to accept a quick claim deed.
Quit, yeah. Q-U-I-T. Somebody get that? There are no additions, corrections, other than the word quit. You need a motion to accept the agenda.
We're going to have to adjourn the agenda. We're going to take the word quit. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda with the exception of the word in 6B, quit. Quick should be quit or quit claim deed. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, how about the minutes of July 5th to the 19th meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 5th and July 19th, 2022. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. So we approve the minutes of July 5th and July 19th of 2022 meetings. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ballot number five, public input.
I have some public input. Couple things. I was going through the language on the lease. There's some things that are troubling. As far as the operator, I'm assuming that's also the lessy. Okay? Leaving the work on anything that has to do with the bar should be at the council's discretion, not at the discretion of the operator or the lessy. Because ultimately, from a past experience when the Sullivan's, the city's going to get hit. Okay? You also want to make sure that you call out the specifications. You don't want somebody coming in that doesn't know what they're doing and they're calling out the specs, depending on floor thicknesses or whatever. The city needs to be checking those and approving those. There's several other, like I said, and it follows the city ordinances also. Okay? I noticed that there's a part of the agenda concerning the credit card. One thing that's happened in the past has been when a certain department exceeds its $1,000 limit, then it picks up somebody else's credit card and adds to those. That's a no-no. That shouldn't be allowed to happen. I'm just drawing your attention to it to watch for it. And I believe that's everything. Again, the language on the lease, if I was going to be signing that lease as an operator, I wouldn't sign it as it stands right now because it's too troublesome. It can put a burden on either the city or the operator. And it changes. On one part of the lease, it says one thing and then it goes back and says something different in a later part of the lease. I do have a 2016 lease. It generally follows the wording of the new lease, but again, there were some things there that probably should have made it into the lease. That's everything I have.
Is there any other public input?
Linda and I have had some complaints about lawns in town. So we have, yeah. But we're going to kind of go through that again.
Yeah.
And we could, now, we went down every street.
Yep.
We've had a lot. But we're going to kind of...
Because the ordinance does state that weeds and grass are not dicks, they eat inches. So I checked the ordinance and re-read it.
Yeah, we're going to check them and go through it. I just, we just didn't have time today.
But the weeds are the only thing green on.
But I think that's...
Fine, I'll chop the weeds down.
A lot of branches.
Yeah, a lot of, like, trees growing on foundations.
Yeah.
Have you had any discussion with our ordinance?
No, unfortunately not.
And we are guilty of the city of this. Up at the golf course, there's weeds here. Just by the parking lot and everything, there's a lot of weeds.
Those are supposed to be taken care of last week. They are not.
No, we were there today. And they're still probably good.
They change each fall. I did talk to Taylor about that.
Was the complaint, would that be considered public input? If somebody comes into the finance office and files a written complaint, is that considered public input?
Not really, no. I think it's making the city know about an issue, but if they don't specifically come here directly to be, or ask, I guess it'd be brought to people's attention here. It wouldn't consider public.
Okay, fine. Is there any other public input? Sandy, you have almost 22 minutes for six and seven.
Wow.
You're going to have to talk real slow.
Start with a few jokes and some...
Well, we'll move on to item six, legal update, 505 Ofsted.
Okay, Pat and I have been working on this. I got a chance to talk to a creditor that had a lien on the property for, what, $6,600 or more? Somewhere between $6,600 and $6,800 bucks. They filed a partial release, so there is no longer that property is now as far as being held unencumbered. And then we talked to Mr. Paulson this week. He's signed a quick claim deed to the city, turning over the property to the city for the city to own. He and I have also discussed, I guess Pat and I discussed, and I discussed over with him. We're going to allow him to go on the property. He still owns the property until the deed is recorded. So one of the things you all are going to do tonight is vote to accept the quick claim deed. Then we'll send it down to Union County tomorrow when we get it recorded. Then we own the property. We're after the letter authorizing him and his sister to enter the property for the exclusive purpose of retrieving any personal property or items that they want to get out of the house. I've let them know the city is going to proceed with demolition as soon as possible, but that they would likely have until this Friday, possibly at the earliest, that we could get demolition contracted over there. So I told them they got up until the guy show up to knock it down and then when they're going to knock it down, shows over. We also got them to agree to waive any liability for injury or personal damages or their stuff or anything like that. Of course, we're moving on. So I think Pat has, we have two bids, right, Pat?
Yes.
One from THA and one from Johnny Johnson. I think that one is about $9,000 bucks. And so as soon as we figure that out, we'll be ready to knock it down and proceed forward. That's all I have on 505.
What about the cars? What happens to the lawn vehicles that are there on the property?
It's a good question. The nuisance action, I want to take a look at the order again, the nuisance action cover the entire property. So I think we can remove them. If he wants them, he's got title to them. He can take them.
We also should have them on, get them on the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can remove them. I'll speak with Mr. Paulson again. I was, frankly, I wasn't aware there were cars on there. We'll ask him what he wants to do with them. If he's okay with us getting rid of that, I prefer something in writing.
Do we have to have the titles to do that?
I think most places are going to want a title. If he doesn't have them...
Another one is rent.
Salvage title or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of getting a salvage title other than that it's not as easy as it seems.
So we had two different bids. One was for $9,000, the other one was for $26,000, $25,000. Now, I will say the $25,000 one talks about not just demoing, it talks about removing and backfilling and everything else. Are we certain that that's what this $9,000 bid is?
He will go in and cap the water lines, cap the sewer line, remove all the debris from the property and leave it ground ready, but not seeded. And then the $9,000 is just for the house and then it's about $1,500 a tree. So it's up to decide.
Does the other one, doesn't have anything on it, about trees on the other one?
I don't see more trees. They do have a removal garage and foundation option on the more expensive one. Right?
Yeah, this one did not exclude the $9,000, those included moving the garage, right?
Correct. It involves cleaning the garage out, but not removing the garage.
So assuming that it would cost $1,800 for these people to remove the garage, that's maybe at least a fair estimate of the cost.
There is someone interested in the garage.
And that would be their responsibility to...
I would like to make a request. Could you guys speak up? It's getting hard to hear again.
Is there something on that there?
Well, okay, so if we're going to follow this in the order, there is a quick claim deed right here, completed by all parties and notarized. I think you guys have a copy of it in your packets. That's the original right there. We would need a motion to accept that quick claim deed.
I'll make a motion to accept the quick claim deed on parcel number 01 dot, 03 dot, 01 dot, 1025. I'll second that.
Carla has seconded the motion that Linda made for item 6B, except the word quit has been substituted for quick and otherwise it's as written. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, we already did talk a little bit about the bids. You guys can see them both. It is kind of interesting that one of them mentions trees and the other one doesn't.
And when you decide on a bid, if you have an opinion which trees you want, if you want both of them, because there's one in the front, one in the back, you just want the one in the front?
Is there just one in the front? There isn't two? I thought there were two in the front. Just one big one? The other one is okay?
By the garage, I think.
I think this one we updated before we talked about the trees.
I think so too. Because that was, I brought that to your attention last meeting about the trees.
So where will they take the stuff?
The foyer.
Oh.
It's a little more liberal.
Right?
Correct.
I think Scott does a lot of this, doesn't he?
Yeah, he did our...
Yes. He does a lot.
Local?
I guess I lean towards Scott.
I would too. He did a good job at our place. Yeah. And at that price, I think we should probably take the trees.
And they just clean up the property?
Both trees?
I would. I guess maybe that's the way to go because they are old trees, big trees.
Getting them out of there at least makes it easier for somebody to develop it and it makes it maybe a little bit more attractive for a developer.
And I did speak with Scott today. He would be able to start on the project next week.
That would be nice.
I guess I find it hard to read that. Is it persing, excavating? Okay.
I guess I lean towards persing.
Well, any other discussion you want?
So it's over the $9,000, an additional $3,000 for the trees, correct?
So my question, I guess after we get this demoed and stuff, then the plan is to put a lot up for sale and then the income goes back to the city to help pay for the demo and stuff like that.
There is a group working at bringing some housing into El Sister and they're interested in that lot.
And what does a lot that size go for?
For the city, we would sell it at what the cost would have been. So there will be this $12,000 for demolition. There will be some real estate taxes to bring it current and then probably some legal fees.
How much, what is the front footage? 75 or...
That one is... It's a good sized lot.
90 foot fronts.
There's just three lots on that block. There's just three houses on that block.
Oh, okay, yeah. So it's...
I think we talked about we could get a twin home on that one.
Yes, we did.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing this up is for back drive lots. If you were going to try to compare approximate values, I mean, I'm just arbitrarily saying, well, $15,000 bucks. That's about what one of the back drive lots costs. So... Any other discussion? Then the question would become, do we want to accept a bid? And if so, which bid and who will make the motion to do that?
Can I make a person, Rick? So I think I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Persing Excavation at a rate of $12,000 and the vote could begin sometime next week.
I'll second that.
You know, I can't break that fast. So that letter said... No, I mean, the letter to these folks said demolition occurring, not anticipate demolition occurring prior to Friday, August 5th, 2022. So...
It'll be after a date. Under or before a date. Or on or after a date.
Work begins 8/8, 2022 to the end of the week. Which would be what? 8/8 and... 8/8 to 8/12? Is that what you're saying, Lucas?
Yep.
Motion has been made to accept the bid from Persing Excavation at a rate of $12,000. Work beginning somewhere between 8/8, 2022 and 8/12, 2022, next week. Is there any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How about 307 Iowa?
None, Mr. Mayor.
None?
Have you read anything on county, any stuff there?
The gentleman who is doing our appraisal, I think, had asked for additional time. He has viewed the county buildings. The county let him in to do that. I talked with the State Attorney's Office last week on just kind of where we were at and he has not heard anything additional from the grade elevator. At this point, we're just waiting for our appraisal.
Well, any other updates that you can think I'm saying?
None that I can think of, Mr. Mayor.
Don't really want to move to the police department because I think he's going to take longer than seven minutes. Can I move on to item number 12 and then we can come back? That's a quick one. I have here in my hand a, in our certificates and letters congratulating the city and a certificate of achievement for the city and also for Dale Pearson and Bonnie Johnson, accolades for our drinking water. The, for your efforts and concern for safe drinking water, we'd like to present this achievement award to you. That would be the city as well as the two individuals that are responsible for the safe drinking water. There's also a press release that we could get to Gordon. It's right there. I'm going to leave that out. I'm going to put this all back in here to keep it all nice and neat for those certificates. Possibly ask those two gentlemen to come to a meeting and we have Gordon even take a picture. Not a bad idea.
Number 11 might be cleared on second floor two.
Okay, shall we do that? It says motion to approve hiring and motion to approve hiring. I assume some people have been interviewed.
No. No, I did just call the one today and I said, we just got to talk about where we're setting. I'm not sure. I mean, we want people to still get hours. So we got to look, we got to look at that.
Sure, I see what you're saying.
And this person is not in athletic, so it would be a good, I mean, not saying it's bad in athletics, but would be more available. But I told her I would be in contact. So I said, now we...
Right, that was quick. HRC, I can tell you that Unit 307, I think it is, all the way at the south end is going to be, the tenant will be moving out the 11th of August, at which time that will be ready, well, ready for sale, then offered for sale. That's quite a bid to keep that grass somewhat green, just like it has for everybody. And that's a definite cost. As a matter of fact, another major cost, we had an air conditioning problem, ironically, in Unit 307. I do have one bill from Carlson's that is just under $1,000. However, I do see that they also bill us tax, so I'm going to have to contact them with the correct paperwork to let them know that that tax will be removed. So without the tax, it's $924. I do know that they were called back again to the same location, but I don't know how to say it without, I don't believe there will be any charges for a day. I believe it was just a glitch, so... So I guess that's about all I've got for an HRC update. We're, of course, interested in putting that house on Broad Street, but we're also under the impression that it's going to be 18 to 24 months before you can see the house, so... Two more minutes. Well, we'll give you an opportunity to set those chairs up so it's a little quieter, but it is now 6:30, and we're going to move on to item eight. Pardon me. Alcestor Bar Bid Opening, and we have three envelopes here. I guess I don't know how to pronounce the last name. Augustine Lafranbois?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yes.
Lafranbois?
Lafranbois. How are you pronouncing it?
Augustine. We'll just, uh, it does say bid price $1,520, dated the 25th of July. There's actually a well-written document here. I guess it probably would behoove us all to hear what he's got to say there. This is.
She.
The objective.
It's a she.
She.
Yeah, it's a she.
Augustine? Oh, really? Sorry. I apologize.
It took my whole.
Apologize. Uh, the objective says to provide a quality lease slash contractual agreement between the City of Alcestor and Augustine Lafranbois. To provide quality bar services within Alcestor, South Dakota, having dedicated short-term and long-term business plans set in place. Proposal is that Augustine offers $1,520 per month lease agreement with the intent of purchasing said property between two to three years of operation. Provided the lease amount is above current contractual amount, said amount to be locked in for three years. If Augustine provided at the end of the second or third year of lease agreement to purchase, the total lease amount paid to the City of Alcestor shall go toward the final purchasing price. Proposed is a three-year lease agreement, starting on the proposed opening date of September 1st, 2022. Augustine is willing to be subject to three one-year lease agreements. Augustine retains all rights to name the business under an LLC or DVA. Then, it says, under considerations, Augustine has a long-term business plan to expand the bar service to a bar and grill service within three, the three-year proposed timeframe. Augustine qualifies for a liquor and lottery license within the state of South Dakota. Augustine expects to expand business within the City of Alcestor, providing more total tax revenue for the City of Alcestor. Augustine plans on expanding special events such as, but not limited to, poker runs, concerts, karaoke, holiday contests, dress-up events, and charity events. As stated above, Augustine intends on purchasing said property within the end of two to three years of operation. So I'm gonna pass that around, and you can take a look at it. And I'm gonna open up the next bid. Do you, in the order they were received, so. This bid is from Rick and Laura Welling. It is the bid price of $1,400, dated the first day of August. And I'm not going to read all of the information in here. They've given us a lot of good information to help make a decision. Excuse me. But the letter says, dated August 1st, "To the City of Alcestor, if you're looking for leaders who are passionate about hospitality and community, who also have the education, knowledge, skills, and experience in the bar and restaurant industry, we hope you consider us to be the next operators of the Alcestor Bar and Alcestor Liquor Store. We were raised in a small town and understand the value of having an establishment in our city that will foster camaraderie and connection." As you can see from our resumes, that's what these two documents are. The first one's Rick's, and the second one is Laura's. Rick has been successful in the restaurant-bar business for over 35 years, including managing our own supper club, bar, and catering businesses. And then it says, "In addition to many roles within the bar and restaurant industry, Laura has worked in business operations, marketing, human resources, and compliance. We make a great team, and would love the opportunity to continue the success of the Alcestor Bar and to positively contribute to the community that we have made our home. Thank you for your consideration, Rick and Laura Welling." And again, they've provided us with their resumes, which do reinforce just exactly what they mentioned in their letter. That is number two. Right. One. Lucas, do you have that first one?
Yes.
At the very top, would you just write a little bounce sign, one, number one?
Yes.
Thank you. And we should do the same on the front, that one. Number two, not number one.
No, maybe the number two.
Well, I told you to do the same, I didn't.
Sometimes I don't listen very well.
Okay, I'm just gonna go with number three. Okay, so now I'm gonna probably butcher this last name, but it's either Melissa Conan or Keenan. I don't know whether they go in the E or how they work together.
Coonan.
Coonan? Okay, well. And Melissa has a bid price of $1,413. This bid is also dated, today's date, August 1st. Letter says, "My name is Melissa Conan. I'd like to introduce myself and share my experience and qualifications. I've worked in customer service for 26 years and in the bar and restaurant business for 22 years. I'm well-versed in handling a bar environment. I'm confident that I can make the bar of Alcestor a fun and profitable establishment." Excuse me. "For example, I plan in the future months to bring in bands and karaoke and/or trivia night. I also plan to continue dart leagues and look to begin a pool league. During holidays and big sporting events, I wish to have food provided by Potluck. I'd like to add a power hour in addition to a happy hour. Moving forward, I have many more ideas, and I'm positive I can run the bar successfully. I look forward to contributing to the community of Alcestor." Respectfully, Melissa Conan." And then she lists five references that could be contacted. Here's the DA and our press release for that water. Oh. Yeah. Oh, they're already all up here. Sorry. I didn't realize that. So we've got two options. Option number one, council members, you would have the luxury of discussing this all in open session, and then we would make whatever determination you make, and very possibly approve a bid. Option number two would be to move to go into executive session, if you feel that's absolutely necessary. I myself don't feel that it is, but that's just my opinion. And then we could discuss, you could all discuss it if your hearts content, and then move to come back out and make any motion. So, again, I'm not saying that we have to do this in open session, but it'd be my suggestion to do that because I think it just makes sense to be as transparent as we can possibly be with all of this discussion.
Well, I have a little trouble with Augustine's, because she said that all the rent would go towards the purchase price.
If I, if I could.
Yeah.
For everybody here, and Augustine, I'm not picking on you or anybody for that matter, but I understand what you're trying to do. You could propose that to the city at some other time, but the way the bid is structured and what the city is offering is you may lease this bar for a year at a dollar amount, subject to the terms in the lease you were provided. So if, if working towards a purchase isn't in the lease, and it's not, that is not something that would be, would be part of the deal. Everything that's in the lease is the term that would govern your relationship with the city and your rental of the property. And that, and that goes for everybody. However, there's, neither me nor the mayor nor anybody can stop you from saying, hey, look, I wanna buy this bar, and you can say that 365 days a year for the next three years, and the city could say yes or no. So the, what I would advise the council to do is, is look at that as, if she's willing to have it be considered, that look at that as sort of what her business plan is, and if the bid amount is, is for leasing the bar, subject to the terms that are in the written lease, and the city wants to accept it, they would be able to do that. But the city has not placed the option to buy in play right now, so to speak. Just to kind of clarify for everybody. If anybody has any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Is that understandable to everybody?
So I guess we need to know if that $1,500 is for rent then, right?
It, it would.
The lease amount.
Yes.
Yes, it would have to be.
Okay. But she had written it a different way, so I wanna make sure that that's still her bid, don't we?
Yeah, and I, and I think you.
We just accepted that way.
I guess what I'm getting at is, if you're willing to pay $1,500, you're doing so subject to the terms in the lease. The lease is provided to review, and the bid is to lease the building, subject to the terms of the lease. So again, if it ain't in the lease, that ain't what happened. And you can feel free to withdraw your bid, if it's, if that's not something you wanna do. You know, you've got some time if we, if we accept the bid, and you say, okay, I don't wanna do that, that's understandable. Please let us know now.
Yeah, I also stated that it would be per month.
Yeah.
So that would be the.
But it was just when, it just said that all of that would go towards the purchase price, but that probably is not going to be the case.
Right, that, that would not be, that would not be possible under the terms.
Yeah.
But under the proposal, she also says she's willing to be subject to three one-year lease agreements. So, and on this document that was signed, and that's where the bid is, it says.
That was my only problem because I'm like, yeah, we can't give her $54,000 off of the sale price. At three, that's what, where I was coming from. I'm just thinking we're getting into something that's not good.
I see.
And everyone was going to keep it as a bar, correct?
That was what it looked like, yes.
I believe that there was one that said that there were plans to expand for food. The lease does allow for the preparation and distribution of food. So I think if, you know, those things were coming along, that by read of the leases, that's barely included in the lease.
But the lottery is to the person who leases, correct?
Correct.
So they would have to go through that, get a little process.
And a liquor license, is that true?
Is that what you transfer?
That would just transfer, okay.
I guess I, my first thought is I would go with somebody that is younger. So there's a lot more years ahead of them to run the bar, is my first opinion. Yes, that'd be the way I'd vote, Augustine, is. I mean, I think the other two bids are very fair. I think nothing against them, but. So it's like $184 difference.
So not one, it's not one difference.
Correct.
But I, when I just went to that class on bids and it said that we, when I went, they said, when you do the closed bids and you open them, they automatically has to go and to the highest bidder. You can't pick and choose, you have to do the highest bidder. And they said, if you don't, you have to have a good and explainable reason why you're not going with the highest bid.
Correct.
That's what I just.
I got to caveat that because you're absolutely right. But, but, there's always a but. But one of the statutes I think you're referring to is, is the, the sale of surplus property.
That's not what they said, but.
Okay, but so this is different, one.
Yeah, this is for a lease.
But two, we also have to have suitable person, suitable location. And so, and, and some other background type of thing. So if I come in and offer you a million dollars a week, but I'm a felon.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, that would be part of the dispo, yeah.
And so that you get a little, get a little bit with the suitable person, suitable location, which is kind of what Mr. Grayson was talking about. We've got, we've got some additional flexibility because of the nature of what's going to be operating. But you are correct, we need to justify.
I'm just saying we have to justify anything that we do.
So what do we need to do to the bar before it can change hands? I mean, I understand there's a few things that need to be repaired. But I mean, all three of these bids, you're going to take it kind of how you see it? I mean, or is there something that needs to be done before you're willing to open it?
I think as far as now, I think it's just little things that could be upgraded, but nothing extravagant or anything like that.
The bathroom floor is in the new. I don't say, if there are something that needs to be fixed, it's not like I would say it's going to stop me from opening as long as, as it's said to that it will be fixed.
And I do know that there's a lot of things in there, speaking with Teresa, that are not the city's. So you understand that, like the TVs.
Bar stools are all there.
Some of that stuff you would have to purchase. So you understand, you know that.
I was going to say the bar stools are.
Bar stools and tables are others, but I know the TVs and she named.
Glasses. The glasses. The coolers are blonde, the bar, I believe. Or the city, I mean, they all go to the city, except for the freezer that she has pizzas in.
Yeah.
The, the other thing that, I will explain this to whoever gets the bid. Couple of the things that the lease requires, and so you would have up until you take possession of the building, is my read of the law and then how, what we allow in the lease. You've got to have a surety bond in the amount of $10,000 or a performance bond. And basically what the bond says is you get a bondsman, I don't know if a bank does it, but there are places you can get it. But you get a bond for less than 10,000, obviously, but they put up the bond and that bond covers, you're going to do all the things that the lease says to include paying rent on time and then to include purchaser liquor, all that kind of stuff. So when I was reviewing this today, my conclusion was that you'll have up until your native occupancy or when the lease commences to get those things done, along with procure insurance on the building. The city, the city has the right to let you cure a defect. And so obviously whoever gets it, if you're having trouble getting insurance or they're going to say the policy covers from here and there, those are things that are noticed a bid, says that we, we can waive technicalities and we can work with you on. But just so you're aware, those are two of the kind of big ticket items. Whoever gets it is going to need to get done fairly quickly.
And we will do an inventory of the liquor. Then they could buy that? How does that work?
So the lease covers that as well. And what, what the lease says with Teresa and what the new lease says going forward is any inventory she's got that's unused or unopened, we buy back at the rate she paid, which includes the five and 10% markup, municipal markup. And then the new lease says we sell that to the new incoming person who's obligated to buy it at the five or 10% markup. So the city becomes the middle man. But essentially everything, nobody makes any money on that deal. It just gets transferred from one to the other.
Well, I'm not trying to pressure you, but in two minutes, we've got a public hearing. Well, I guess my question.
Does anybody have, I mean, at this point, I'm thinking it has to go to Augustine. She did the best bid. Does anybody else have anything?
That would be my question too. Is there any other discussion needed? And if there is, let's do that now.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve accepting the bid from Augustine Lefranboise, or however you say it, I'm trying to be very French though. So in the amount of $1,520 for the leasing period of one year. And I don't know what it would be contingent.
I, if I could, it, it doesn't need to be contingent on anything because everything it's contingent on is in the.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bid from Augustine Lefranboise in the amount of $1,520 per month for the lease period of one year. Only contingent upon the lease agreement is what our legal representative has told us. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Bid number one. Congratulations. Thank you.
Could I make just one comment? In 2016, the bar was leased at $14,000 a month. So that's, so that, that goes back. So it can, money can be made. It's just, like I said, we've come a long way and lost money. But that's what it was in 2016, that's what the lease says. So just as a point of interest for those of you that weren't around at that time.
Okay, well, we're done with item number eight. Item number seven, public hearing, that would be the application for off-sale liquor license. There are two different. Elsister Quick Stop and Total Stop Food Store, yeah, all right, I see. K J V V. And what did you say? There are members from both locations here that you can visit with if you'd like. Or do you want them to propose the case, if you will?
I just want to say that in the gas station business, liquor is one of the categories that's rising, just like beer sales. People like to stop it and then get, you know, like a different variety of stuff. It'd be very beneficial to people, so if we could offer that service of liquor.
Elsister Quick Stop. Keith, it's K J V V. Can you tell us what that acronym stands for?
This is mine, mine was initially.
Okay. That's kind of what I figured, but it's a name like Keith and it's starting out with K. Kim, would you like to address the council or anybody? Or anybody, I mean.
Well, I would just like to be for the opportunity to apply for the license. I do think it would be good revenue for the city to keep a lot of the businesses that have been leaving town to go to different towns to buy their off-sale liquor. I hate to see that happen. And it's happened more times than I can count over the last year. So I think it would be very beneficial to the store and to the community with the revenue. I've had some of the city council members come down and visit me. We've talked about a locked cupboard. We've talked about proximity and where it's going to be located. And I hope that I answered all your questions when you came to visit me. If you have any more, please feel free to ask.
Regarding the locked cupboard, and I'm not trying to argue with anybody, but has anybody been in a Casey's lately?
I know.
Like say, for instance, a Casey's in Hayward or Akron. It's just right there on a shelf. I mean, if anybody wanted to pick one up, they could just grab it. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't maybe be a little bit more secure, but I'm just saying, I mean.
I don't have any trouble, my cigarettes are also locked up at times. So I don't really, it's going to be right by the register, so it's not going to be where they can't see what it is. Or maybe some open on the top to maybe show, you know. I'm just trying to cover all my bases here. We do also do alcohol training so that I don't have anybody under the age of 18 at the till. And I always have a 21-year-old in the building at all times. Once again, we have passed all our stings. So, and our hours are customer-friendly. So that is also a good thing, so.
Well, you've heard from both of the parties, representatives from both of the parties. And so I don't know if you've got anything to discuss among yourselves.
So we can sell liquor on Sundays, hard liquor, right? And the Quick Stop is not open on Sundays, correct?
Correct.
I'm just going, I'm going off the, the sting and some comments that I've heard from some parents. I actually just heard it today. I would, I'm willing to be for Total Stop. That's who I would go for. After talking to Kim and then having some parent explaining something that happened with their child, I just don't feel good about offering to Quick Stop. Although I love your chicken. I do love your chicken.
Any other opinions or concerns, comments?
So you're going to hear say from one person?
No, not just one, I've been hearing about it. It's, but I mean, I specifically talked to the parent today.
Because we had a problem with one employee.
And not, anybody can have a problem with an employee. Don't, don't, Kim, absolutely, you do not think that you are exempt, right? That you know you could, anybody can.
Anybody can.
You know? And they could, there's a lot of fake IDs out there too. Everybody needs to remember that. So just because you failed, it doesn't mean you're bad, so.
No, I, no, I don't.
I want to set that straight.
Yeah, because I'm only going off of this. I'm not going off of anything else because I go there. So I don't have a problem. I'm just saying, I don't think that kids should be able to get, you know, I, I'm just worried, that's my worry, is because of the one parent. I will say it was only one parent I got to, but I have heard from other people. And so that to me just makes me a little weird. And, you know, and did you have any plans on how, where to put it or anything?
Yes.
Where? I mean, I'm just curious, because I know I've talked to Kim already.
We would put it on by across the, across the house in the coffee.
Further discussion? Well, if not.
I'll make a motion to approve any Total Stop Food Store package off-sale liquor license.
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve granting Total Stop Food Store and the package off-sale liquor license. Is there any other discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Total Stop Food Store, package off-sale license that's still available. Thank you all for coming. Now, we're going to move on to item 10, and that's the police department. And I know you've scolded, has been sitting there anxious to give us the full report, which you already gave us the paper form.
I do.
Wow. You guys don't just sit in your cars, do you?
You know, we do get those opinions, I think, from a certain generation that may think that police department doesn't do anything, which I'm actually glad that they're able to have those opinions. You know, I think that's a good pat on everybody's back that they don't have to worry. But I highlighted a few bigger items, I guess. Um, you know, we've had a few possession of the firearms, um, three distributions, we've had nine total possession of the controlled substances, um, we had five search warrants this month, and so I think we're a little bit busy, but...
Can you explain distribution of a controlled substance and possession of that? Like, what are we talking about? Because that's fairly vague.
Possession is strictly a use of a controlled substance. You know, I mean, I experience all users are dealers, whether you can prove it or not. So, I mean, they all pass around to their buddies. The distribution ones from this month are more, um, heavy amounts.
High volume, yeah.
I'm talking 10 pounds plus.
What kind of substance?
Of methamphetamine. Whether I can prove that 10 pounds is a different story, but I know there has at least been that 10 pound, 10 pounds plus within the residence. So, just to give you a perception of, you know, an eighth is a normal, I guess, slang term for an eighth of an ounce, which is usually about 100 bucks and can last some, last somebody, you know, a week. So, and that's an eighth of ounce. So, gives you kind of a perception of the large amounts.
Eighty weeks worth.
A lot of time with no sleep.
Yeah, no kidding.
But, any other questions, I guess, about, you know, I think we had, I've been trying to put some stuff on Facebook. Um, I'm thankful that Kelloland has picked up a few things, so we can, you know, get some stuff in the early mornings, so our older generation can see that. But, any other questions about that?
How many officers do you have?
Two. Me and one other guy.
That's it, huh?
We have a couple part-timers that help out here and there, but, um, I don't say every other week there's one shift, maybe that's...
Yeah. There's 168 hours a week. That's a lot to cover.
That was way off when I said eighty weeks. That was an eighth of an ounce, not an eighth of a pound.
And like I said before, you know, I'm happy that, you know, some, some people are able to have that opinion that we don't do anything, you know? It's, if they don't see it, in my mind, that's a win, you know? We keep it from our schools, you know? If something does happen at the school, we swatch it right away. Um, you know, we're trying to keep it off the streets, we're keeping our, you know, citizens safe in a sense, you know? I, I take it, yes, that 90% of people don't really know what actually goes on, and I, I feel like, like you said before, that's kind of a pat on the back, so.
So are you seeing any trends as far as things, anything stands out as far as getting better, getting worse, things that are?
It's continually, I guess, probably going to get worse in the future, just the way it is, you know, with the population growth type of thing, especially around us. You know, we're off the interstate, where some people just feel it's a lot safer to run a highway, you know? So, that, let's say, it's just, it'll be a roller coaster up and down for a long time, but I think gradually you'll see a trend upwards, you know?
As a matter of fact, we've had this conversation a few times in the past months, where all of a sudden we thought, oh, it kind of looks like there's an ebb, you know? And now, all of a sudden, there's a heck of a flow. So, I think that roller coaster's a good picture in your mind as to what is going on. I can tell you this, when you look at those kind of numbers, and we consider the fact that we have two officers full-time, that's why I don't balk at proving overtime for these gentlemen. So, they're doing their jobs, and thank goodness they are.
Yeah, because we've been in Kelloland a lot, right?
Yeah, Kelloland just likes to elaborate on their stories. If it's not sensational enough, they'll make it sensational enough.
It's really not what we're doing that far.
I think you really need another full-time officer.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, they're not alone. We all think that we do, but we can't pay for another officer. And there's the rub. It's, it's almost impossible to be able to figure out how we can come up with the funds that would take to pay another full-time officer. And we've tried, we've, we've talked about a number of different things that we could maybe move money in different locations, and there's a lot of street work, there's a lot of sewer work, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to our infrastructure, and there's a lot of police work, obviously, that needs to be done as well. All of costs. But, you're right, you're, I mean, you're, I'm not arguing with you at all. We've talked about that a lot. Animals found, was that cows in the middle of town or what?
Usually it's, usually it's a certain somebody's cows that are out.
What goes? You had goats?
They're not right in the middle of town, they're out to the side a little bit. Well, I don't know if anybody's got any other questions regarding this monthly update. I do see there is an executive session and then a motion to approve hiring, so I'm not trying to say we got to stop discussing this, we can certainly continue, but...
Question, what is the average age of the resident living in Elsester? Does anybody have an idea?
Good question.
We are on the higher end of the scale, so I'm going to say in the 50s probably would be the average, between 15 and 60.
And what is the total population? Are you talking countywide for the population with the farmers in the area, or just the city limits of Elsester?
Yeah, 800.
In the city.
Okay.
Now, because of the fact that they're able to patrol a little bit outside of the city limits, it is theoretically possible that they would be picking somebody off, say, on Highway 11, that is, that they're not within the city. As the chief mentioned, you know, people look at this as a town that's far enough off the interstate, oh, well, small town, 800 people, we could blow through there, no problem. Not always.
But we don't get any tax dollars from rural people, correct? But they are, right? So we don't get any revenue from outside of town.
Figure out our tax, we talked about that last time, what our tax projection is going to be, what we're going to get for the real estate tax dollars?
Um, the auditor just sent me that information today, but I didn't have a chance to reveal.
Okay, well, you, you had said that you would be able to, be able to tell us, so we should know at the next meeting.
Yes.
How much is going to go up theoretically, right?
Correct.
Be nice to know.
Well, especially for budget considerations.
Yeah, yeah, it would be nice for you to know, for sure.
Yeah, she just sent it out today to everyone.
So, my next question is, if we're done with this discussion, do we need an executive session?
I would, I would like to ask for one.
I will make a motion to enter in the executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, Grand One personnel.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, parentheses, one, personnel. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is 7:23 PM. Seven, two, three.
Oh, we lost everybody but our loyal fan.
Right. He's a loyal fan. Okay.
Oh, I thought you said royal.
We are in the executive session at 7:55, 5:5 PM. And, Chief, I see that there's this thing here that says motion to approve hiring. Can you show us in?
Yes, sir. I have spoken with an ex-deputy, which is retired, so has parted ways on a good term. She retired, she worked around the area, Miss Lisa Schenzel. Um, been kind of looking for, for covering the fair, I guess. Grayson's out on vacation, and I wasn't going to tell him to not go to Spain. I went on vacation, so I wasn't going to...
And missed the Elsester Fair, right?
His loss.
Yeah, that's what I say. We've got a rodeo. But, um, our kind of more reliable part-timer is also going to visit family in Wisconsin, so I spoke with her. She's going to have a veterans', uh, what do you want to call it, booth down there on Friday night, so basically it's help us out on Friday night. She's very knowledgeable, I think she has 40-plus years of experience. Um, and I think she retired earlier this year, so not much time off the road at all.
So, basically, it'd be just a, almost like a seasonal officer, if that's what you want to call it, part-time, obviously, but...
I would say part-time, because I'm sure she'd be willing to, you know, come help out at any other point if we get that...
Or as needed.
What was her name again?
Lisa Schenzel. I believe I gave Pat the...
How did you spell her last name?
I know it's S-C-H. E-N-Z as in zipper, E-L.
Okay. What kind of wage are we looking at?
What are your other part-timers?
Pat and I just looked that up, was it?
Yeah, that's on that piece of paper I just gave you, it's all there.
She is a certified...
Yeah, but if you look at that piece of paper, the yellow one's where I say police, it's got them all listed.
Not what it did.
Okay.
Because it's a Lisa, not that.
I'll say our...
Are they not in alphabetical order?
Well, I'll tell you how I did it. She'll understand, knows what I did. So does that help you? That's where everybody is at.
Uh, certified.
Then Grayson gets 1828, isn't he certified?
Yep.
Yeah, that was it.
But it's not the same range as Grayson's.
Right, not for part-time.
I think it's 17...
No, but I'm saying that's...
1775 or 1875.
1725 is Lauren. 1675 is Avery and Gregory.
So then it'll be 17.
1725?
1775.
75?
Yeah. That's on right.
Okay.
Pat and I went over it Monday, Friday, or something like that, but too much has
Well, it'd be good to have another part-time officer in your magazines, so to speak.
She lives in the Dunes. Yeah, we're slowly building up a little stockpile, so it can actually cover some...
Take a little bit of a breather once in a while.
Yep. Take the bold fishing.
Well, that is the chief's request. I don't know if there's any other discussion you guys would like to have. Obviously, he's going to be all alone here in a few days, because we've got a fair coming to town.
Grayson's already gone, isn't he?
Grayson's gone?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's actually all alone, you're right.
Well, I will motion to approve hiring Lisa Schenzel, rate of 1775.
Motion's been made to approve hiring Lisa Schenzel as part-time officer at a rate of $17.75 an hour. Is there any other discussion?
So just to clarify, this is part-time, as needed, correct?
Sounds, yes.
Is there any other discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nah, thank you.
Okay, I almost made it to the end of the meeting this time. Pretty good.
Looking on that scoreboard, maybe you like it.
It's Neston.
Austin, if you have time to stay, we may need to talk with you on number 15.
Thank you.
So, we've done 11 and 12, we move on to item 13, finance officer updates.
So, one thing, if you guys are out and about today, I would encourage you to drive by Circle Drive. Lonnie completely revamped that corner on Circle Drive and Ford, and today it was asphalted, and it looks really nice.
Really does.
I agree with that.
And they did a great job, cause I don't know how familiar you are with that area, but next to Bud Peterson, the street was, was too high and we could never get in there to mow it, to do any street maintenance whatsoever. And that's why Lonnie ground it all out, and they did a great job. So, I do encourage you to look at that and give Lonnie an out of way, cause that turned out really nice. I am gonna be working on the budget and I would like to find a time when the budget for the finance office committee could meet so that we can begin to discuss. I have met with the departments to find out their wish list for the five to eight-year plan moving forward. And the big thing that I need from the council is what you want me to base the wages on as far as a potential raise.
Can we wait till we see how much money we're giving? Much more money, tax money?
Can you give me a range? Cause if you could just give me a starting point, that's what I would like.
The raise part?
Do you want me to do a 3%, 2%?
We've talked about this and, I mean, taxes have gone up, gas has gone up, and it hasn't gone up 3%.
No.
It's gone up 10-plus percent. I'm not saying we need to shoot for 10%, it'd be nice to shoot for 10%. Everybody here would agree with that.
Yeah, if you could do it, yeah.
So, if you wanted a raise, 3% to 10%. Depending upon how much...
I would like something a little bit more realistic.
I, I, I know what you're saying, but...
So, what, what did we go up last, what was it?
3%.
3%. And what did Hayward go up, do you know?
I do not.
You think we could go up 5%?
The other communities in South Dakota are kind of all over the place. I mean, that was a question that went around on the lips there as well. So, it's, it's a struggle, but it would just help me to get started.
And you say all over the place, you're talking anywhere from 1.5% to 6%?
3% to 8%.
Oh, so it is up to you.
5% realistic? Can you try to find, I mean, yeah, that would be at least a starting point. I mean, that's halfway what it probably should be, but...
I think your employees would appreciate that, cause I think they may have went backwards last year cause I think Austin was more than 3% last year.
Yeah, I'm sure they do. But they probably were not the only ones that went backwards, you gotta remember that. It wasn't just us.
Correct.
Every taxpayer also went back.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I'm very grateful for the job that I have. So, I'm, but I, I just think that if you can give me, if you want me to shoot for 5, I can do a 3% and 5%.
If we do a 5 and maybe a 6. No?
I have 1.5 to 5.5 in my mind.
So, then that's not a bad idea, 3, 5, and 6. I mean...
Give us, I mean, see where we're at with it.
I don't know, how much, how much difficulty is there to just adding a percent? How about 3, 4, 5, and 6?
Is it a lot of extra work for you?
Columns on the end.
Okay.
And this is just full, correct?
Yeah, what do you do for the part-timers?
It's the same we did last year, don't we?
Yeah, we did it in price of order last year.
Let's start with that.
Okay.
Let's see what it does.
So, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
No, no, do we want to do 3?
I think you'd say 4.
I'd say 4. Let's start at 3 and go 4, 5, 6.
Okay, all right. And then the next question then is, is there a time next week that the budget committee could meet?
Pretty typical.
So, you think maybe we should leave 3 in there? If it is pretty typical.
Not if it's creating too much more work for it. I think putting 3 in there to see what's, what would normal look like.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. And then see what, okay, okay. 3 to 4, 5, 6, whatever you gotta do, okay.
And then is there a time next week, early in the week perhaps, that budget committee could meet?
They'll only do two of them.
There are only two.
So, Sam, if, could we have 3 if I put a note on the window?
If, if, if you notice it and it's, and it's open meeting, um...
Cause it's a committee.
I think you're okay.
Because trial is new and it would be good for him to, he's never gone through a budget process before, but...
Yeah, I mean, just if you notice that you're meeting, everybody knows they can't take any action with the council. So, you're not meeting as the council, but notice it just so you're...
So, is there a time for the three of you that works? We can, I don't know if it works during the day or if you wanna do it in the evening?
Uh, that'd be at evening. 6 o'clock's about the soonest I can get back to town.
Okay.
And I think there's a school board meeting Monday night, so that, I think. So, I wouldn't do it any night other than Monday if it works.
So, Tuesday evening at night?
So, wait, Tuesday at night?
The night that's at 6.
Okay, we need to approve the warrants if you are so inclined.
I have motion to approve the July warrants.
You'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the July warrants, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've got a sheet here that talks about credit card charge limits and you'll notice there's a new page, or there's, there's a new page. There's a new individual on the page, I just saw Paige Durbin, Abigail Moore is on there, and she wasn't before. Uh, now, it also appears as if Wanda was removed.
She, um, she will be done sometime during this month of August, so she will probably have, she may have charges on it during the month of August. And, but after she is done, then I will destroy the card.
So, you see the limits and that's what you're actually approving to set those credit card charge limits?
I'll make a motion to approve the City of El Cester credit card charge limits as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the El Cester credit card charge limits as presented, is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bank accounts, there's also a new name there, and I believe that's, well, the, the other change that would be, would be removing Wanda. But of course, that's, well, all we're doing is adding Abigail Moore to the list. You can see that Wanda's not on the list, so... We would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve removing Wanda Helverson from all premier bank, city bank accounts and adding Abigail Moore along with Daniel Peter, Patricia Jerns, Lucas Streason, Linda Talbot to all premier bank, city bank accounts.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I put Darla down cause she, I heard her talk last time. Motion's been made according to letter D, excuse me, 13 sub D sub I, as written. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we're going to have to get down there and sign cards.
Yes.
We all need to vote again?
Yep.
So, when is that gonna be?
Um, it'll take me this week to get the minutes typed up and then I'll give it to Stacy.
Okay, correct.
September council meeting, changing the date for Labor Day. From the 5th to...
We usually go to 6, the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, the next day. I'll make a motion to change the date of September 5th, 2022 city council meeting to September 6th at 6:00.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the changing of the date for September 5th, 2022 city council meeting to September 6th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reminders and updates, we got a fair that's coming up here August 4th through the 6th. Pool is gonna close for the season August 14th, Sunday. The city council meeting that's coming up will be August 16th at 6:00 PM. And the first day of school, the AHHHS will be August 18th. Hard to believe.
Okay, from this, we've all received a complaint today from the pool. Austin, that's why you're here. There was an incident last Friday where some very inappropriate behavior happened at the pool by three, at least three boys. That are, and the lifeguard handled it the best he could. And I had told them before, I went talked to them yesterday, that they could call you. But the next two weeks are going to be rough. They've had some repercussion from the parent already, but there was two individuals, adults, at the pool that had put in an official complaint, and it's very justified.
About the individuals?
Yes.
Okay.
But they were kicked out until today. So...
One of our suggestions might be for you and...
Any part-timer?
Lisa, any officer that might be on duty to be around the pool a little bit more.
Maybe just sit on the corner, tell me, we know this is business.
Then, I think Pat talked to me a little bit too today. Gave them dispatch's number, if anything ever happened, just reassure to them, just, we'll, we'll be there very soon, honestly, if they call dispatch, so... Especially if somebody's on at that time, if it's, you know, a block away from my house, usually takes a few minutes to get ready, depending on, so... Just, I would say reassure it to them and we can definitely handle a scenario like that.
You know, I guess, I talked to the individual myself as well that filed the complaint and, you know, he stressed with his individuals and his own kids that were there and the boys had their shorts to their ankles and the cheeks, bare cheeks were shining towards this girl, his daughters. Something needs to be addressed. So, I just wanted to bring this up because, you know, he, he could not make it tonight, but he could come if, you know, the public would like to hear his complaint.
When it was brought to my attention today, I was told that the individual would be willing to sign a formal complaint and originally I thought, well, I don't know if we need that, and then after thinking about it for a few minutes, I said, yes, we do need that. I, I think what a lot of people need to realize is that it really doesn't do a lot of good to sit at coffee or the bar or wherever it is you sit and just complain. You need to put your pen to paper.
Make it aware.
You got an actual complaint.
The, the, this person made a very good point that when lifeguards have to tend with this, a child at the other end could drown. And that's what parents need to remember.
I think, you know, a good consideration maybe for the city is, you know, look upon maybe the pool rules. Could I honestly draft up something to where it's a significant thing to where you're kicked out the entire year?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I would not be opposed to that.
You know, there are other pools in other cities, towns that kids under 12, they have to have a parent with them.
Yes, yeah, right.
You know what I mean, or a grandparent, you know, they just can't have their babysitter that's 15 watching all of them.
And that's what the pool is, is a babysitter.
Maybe it's gonna have to come to that if we can't get this under control.
Because the average age of these were grade four to six, so they're not adults. Or not high school even, they're...
Yeah, I think that'd be a very good thing, maybe, at least for, you know, obviously it's late in this year, but the next year revisit pool rules and draft along with...
First of meds would be something in that. And, and he stated, the lifeguard stated, he gave them a chance. He says, I believe they all need one chance, but they just didn't know that, what he said, so, he tried.
I think he handled it very well.
Yeah.
All things considered, I mean, difficult situation.
And he's been chewed out too, so... I asked, his dad called me tonight and he said he was fine. He was not right there when they got chewed out though, he was down the ways. He was comfortable with making the decision, you know. So, that's why we asked you, yeah, so, just for your awareness, because the next two weeks... Yeah. I've been a lifeguard too and I know towards the end that they try to do every rule, it's just to be smart. And that's two weeks. Thanks.
Thanks, Austin.
Well, I assume that means that item number 15 is moot point. So, that's good, I, I applaud that, that's, that's a good thing. So, then there's only one other thing left to do, and that's item 16.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the council.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the council, is there any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have 8:19 PM.